I'm the Church, so I want to say it's great church, a set of great missionaries. And so we're excited about merging with another church. We're kind of horrible from you guys here in the harbor, as we see on this. And so thank you for that opportunity to come. I'm excited about what God's doing. Let's pray. Father, I do thank you for new things. Father, the excitement that we have over at our end of the, end of the street here. Father, we thank you for bringing together Sister Church to join us. But I also thank you, Father, for familiar paths. I thank you for the things that we look forward to, the consistent things, the things that don't change, the things we take for granted. Thank you for things like your love and your grace and your mercy, for the sunshine, for the seasonal change, for the beauty of our, our community, our village, and a lot of the lakes you are. Father, so many things that are the same. We thank you for that. We thank you for the change because we need that as well. We thank you that you change not at all, that you're the same yesterday, today, and forever. So I come to you as I do every time I get to come, thanking you for these good people, Father, and for our community, thanking you for the opportunity to serve together, to see them serve and, and, and serve in leadership way over us. I pray, Father, for great grace upon this meeting tonight. And I pray, Lord, to help us to have great unity and comity and, Father, enjoyment of one another. And I pray for Village of Winter Harbor. Thank you that there are so many wonderful things happening into the new season and what you have in the future. So we give all of them and all of you this evening to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's move it to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the approval for the previous minutes of April 3, 2024, regular board meeting.
Hello.
All right. Roll call please.
Brayden, aye. Levin.
Yes.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Second item is approval for the minutes of previous meeting, uh, May 9, 2024, special board meeting minutes. Someone?
Okay.
Roll call please.
Brayden, aye. Levin.
Yes.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
All right. The mayor's report. I have a proclamation recognizing May 18 through 24, 2024, as National Safe Voting Report. So for nearly 100 million Americans, voting continues to be a popular recreational activity from coast to coast. And everywhere in between, people are taken to the water and enjoying their time because of voting, sailing, paddling, and fishing. During National Safe Voting Week, the U.S. Coast Guard has federal, state, and local safe voting partners. It urge all voters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters for fun. Safe voting begins with preparation. The Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for 75% of all voting accidents, and that life jackets could prevent nearly 85% of voting fatalities. Through basic voting safety procedures, carrying lifesaving emergency distress and communications equipment, wearing life jackets, attending safe voting courses, participating in free vote safety checks, and staying sober when navigating, we can help ensure voters on America's coastal, inland, and offshore waters stay safe throughout the year. National Safe Voting Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational voters so that they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water throughout the year. Whereas, according to the most recent Coast Guard statistics, Coast Guard accounted 4,040 accidents that involved 636 deaths, 2,222 injuries, and approximately $63 million of damage to property as a result of recreational or voting accidents. And whereas, the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the vote, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of voters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. Therefore, we, the County Council of Winter Harbor, Illinois, hereby support the goals of Safe Voting Campaign and proclaim May 18 through 24, 2024, as National Safe Voting Week and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe voting. In witness of thereof, we urge all those who vote to wear it with regards to their life jackets and practice safe voting habits. Given under the standards of Village of Winter Harbor, Illinois, County Council, and Seal of Village of Winter Harbor, Illinois, this 21st day of May, 2024. So I believe that she would like to take a picture shortly with the president. Correct?
If you could.
Yeah.
Memory.
The official one's gonna be a little slacker.
Dressing your mother's thing like.
Don't be shy.
In your mother's fur shirt.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I can get one more photo, sorry. Got it. Thank you.
And just want to thank the Village of Winter Harbor for its commitment to water safety and for the board joining with villages and cities and state governments and county governments all around the country in this proclamation to recognize and bring public awareness to water safety. And I'd especially like to thank the Winter Harbor Fire Department Marine Rescue Unit for dedication and professionalism. And thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
In turn, I'd like to thank Lanine for all she does for the Coast Guard auxiliary and helps our guys out with training. Or if there's an incident out there, they're always there, at least the auxiliary part. And very appreciated asset out there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Village Administrator's report.
I have no report.
Next thing we have is Clerk's Correspondent.
Here, sir.
All right. I'm gonna move on to the new business committee reports. Uh, trustee Brayden, Administration Committee Development Committee.
Um, and the first one, I make a motion to accept the accounts payable by 2024-1 in the amount of $365,510.50.
Roll call please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
The next thing we have here is, we had a petition that was submitted by Dan and Jennifer Delatutki to subdivide, sorry about that, a property located southeast corner of Second Street and Cabinet Avenue into four lots. This matter was definitely going to the PZB last week, and the PZB gave their approval. And there were a couple of concerns by some residents, so we wanted to give everybody time and options to bring anything else to our attention. And if all good, I'd like to make a motion to ask the attorney general to prepare an ordinance stating the subdivision and the rules.
We have one direction and it's, I'm sorry, it's southwest corner.
Southwest corner.
Sorry. It was, it was present, it wasn't your fault. I should've told you.
Thank you. You put the correction. So it's the southwest corner of Second Cabinet.
Do we have a first and a second?
We have a second.
Second. Roll call please.
Brayden, aye. Levin.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
They're at.
We're done.
I'm good. I'm made again. I make a motion to approve the sale of surplus information technology equipment.
We have a first and a second. Brayden?
Yep.
I'm the one and I'm not.
It's all right. It's an order.
Um, I make a motion, wait the first and second reading of the ordinance, approve the sale of surplus information technology equipment.
Second. Roll call please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
On to Public Safety with Trustee Wes.
Thank you. Uh, we have a presentation that's gonna be made by a special charge for the 911 consolidations. We are pro temp trustees. So I've been asked to give you a very high level overview of the current state of Maryland on dispatching services in Lake County as they relate to the consolidation process that's underway. A few years back, the county started a study to review 911's consolidated services county-wise. That then formed into a working group and some committees where they've been working for the last few years to get to the point that they're at now. The Lake, uh, County of Lake has funded the building, but the new facility will go into, to the tune of $40 million. And a new entity is going to be established within the next 12 months with a name of LakeCom. This will be a consolidated 911 dispatch center for any agency in the county, fire, or police department that wants to be a part of this consolidated service. As a part of that, they've been working on budgeting and funding and things like that. The current estimated budget for the LakeCom center is about $17.6 million and involves staffing up to about 150 people. It will service, at this time, there's 39 agencies that have expressed an interest in being involved in this consolidated service. About $8.5 million of that will be funded by 911 surcharges. But it's recommended that, or suggested under the funding model that the surcharges will be pooled and then shared across all the agencies. That leaves a total of about $9.1 million a year still to be funded by the participating agencies. How that affects us, right now, our current total cost to fire employees dispatch services is $178,000. 911 revenues offset that by approximately $100,000 a year. So we're out of pocket about $63,000 a year for our current dispatch services. There's been some blending cost sharing models or blended cost sharing models reviewed, established in the LakeCom TSET committee, have finalized the cost sharing model. It's a blend of activity for the fire department or full-time equivalents for police department services, population, and the EAB from the village, or the estimated assessed value of all the properties. So it's 39% activity-based, 39% based on population, and 22% based on the EAB of the village. What that translates into for the fire department would be a 1.59% share of that unfunded amount of $9 million, which is approximately $36,000 a year. For the police department, it's equates to a 2.01% share of that $9.1 million, which would be about $137,000 a year. So moving forward with this model, we would see an increase in our costs of approximately $110,000 for dispatch services annually. So the total cost inclusive of the 911 surcharges would be around $273,000 a year compared to $178,000 today. So we wanted to put that out there, let you know that it's coming. The IGA, the final proposal for the LakeCom center was just sent out today. It's a 502-page document that explains all the ins and outs along with IGA's that's sent out for review. The IGA's are due back into Lake County by July 1. To be one of the founding members of the, of the LakeCom facility. If you don't get your IGA in by July 1, there will be an opportunity down the road for onboarding of new agencies that want to join this organization. And there's several right now that are not going to be joining at the time of inception, so there will be a pathway for those agencies to join at Lake Point, which will obviously affect the cost. Hopefully, as more agencies join, the cost will be reduced. But that's it. Very high level. Any questions?
Thank you, Officer Sheehan. You're welcome.
Do you want to touch on what the governing structure this will be moving forward?
Uh, so the governing structure, LakeCom, the LakeCom organization, it will be creating the Board of Governors. Obviously, it's not feasible to have representation from every agency that's involved because you'd have 39-plus people on board. So they will be doing a series of elections to the Board of Governors and then having, I believe, it's eight or nine people on board. It's gotta be a large number. So nine people on the board, I think there's a laugh that I've heard.
Chosen from whom?
What time?
Who, who were those people chosen from?
They would be chosen by the agency to, by the founding agencies.
So everybody, they, they vote for a person, but all the way around.
Right.
Correct.
The agencies were the municipalities.
And we have staffs.
Yeah, they put it in, it would be, it would be law. They would put it in the people that would want it.
Right.
No more questions? Thank you.
Okay, um, I move to set aside the rules of the President and Board of Trustees to wait the first and second readings of ordinance to authorize the sale of surplus vehicles and equipment as listed on the attached disposal ordinance.
Roll call please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
I also move to set aside the rules of the President and Board of Trustees to wait the first and second readings of ordinance repealing Chapter 92 of the Winter Harbor Municipal Code relating to civil emergencies and replacing it with a new Chapter 92, creating the Village of Winter Harbor Emergency Management Agency.
Second.
Any discussions, sir?
Just, if I may, just provide a quick overview. Department heads, all the department heads have been collaborating on making sure that our emergency responses, especially with, with the unstable weather that we've been facing the last few years, making sure that village staff is prepared. Um, the department heads are constantly communicating right now, especially with bad weather coming on board. We just want to make sure that the ordinances reflect what the current standards are in the state of Illinois. As part of this ordinance, we will be naming an emergency manager that would be selected from current staff to be able to coordinate these efforts and making sure that, that we're complying with, with any statement required when it comes to emergency.
And I, we've gotten away from, we used to have actual EMA members, we've gotten away from that through the years, but I know through with us communicating for snowplow and other parts of the place, we've all been, in the fire department, we've all been communicating around the bus. It's been working.
Yes, and the village board also recently approved a major maintenance on our emergency sirens, uh, which, which are up and running. Uh, we still have one that needs one additional piece. Uh, they're very antiquated, but we ensure that they're up and running with all the equipment that they need.
Anybody else? Roll call please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
So Public Works Recreation, I make a motion to consider to accept service agreement with Baxter Movement for water meter procurement, water meter installer selection, and water meter installation project management.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? I just know we had a special meeting about this, and we talked with, with everybody present. I don't know if, but we made a discussion about it, we're following through.
Yes, sir. And also, we do have virtually, we have our engineer, that's, that's virtually online right now. They can answer any questions that the board may have.
Yeah, does anybody have any questions? Roll call please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
So I, this consideration approved 50% of the cost, just $4,000, for the pilot of fireworks show during the summer fair.
Second.
And I know this is out of our budget, so we already did budget, that's just a half down payment, correct?
Yeah, fireworks have gone up quite a bit since COVID, um, so we're gonna get same show as we've always had, they've just, they've gone up about $2,000 over the last few years.
Yeah. They're the hard work of our summer fairs, trusting what work I tell you. A lot of people enjoy the fireworks.
We have a lot of businesses donating to the summer fair this year, so we're hoping they have quite a bit of the cost covered.
Yeah, do the hard work of the rec board and trustee Whitmore, so that's good. Thank you. Roll call please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
So last item is a motion for a consideration, approve the budgeted expenditure of $1,680 for the renewal of a rec desk recreation.
Second.
Discussion, I know this is another budget that I, that we've talked about. Is there any discussion?
Is this a program that they use to register people on?
Yeah.
Online for payments and?
For all the activities. It just simplified. It was, we were archaic in how we did it.
It makes it so much easier.
We were kidding with the times.
That's what we use on the rest of the hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just, it makes, Scott's job, he does a lot, but it makes it just that way. He's here in the staff.
That's a good program.
Anything else? Roll call please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
They're trying to have this public comment, you just have to give your name and address. Come up to the front and speak. Come on up. Don't be shy. Come on up.
So they're saying wedding, we'll take no or further.
All right. Say your name, address. You can say your.
Portland, 23, 25, Third Street. I'm here. Is that what you wanted to know why I'm here?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, regarding the property next door to us, the man with the Third Street also at Oldridge, you probably know it's Perry Margolis. It's, um, I was wondering if that property's been condemned or shall abort it up. I know a couple of years ago, the police came and he was out of there. So what is the status on that house? Does anybody know?
There is a demolition order that's available. We can demolish it when the village has the.
You know, I'm, I'm very sorry. I'm a little hard here.
Okay.
I'm gonna come up here.
You look safe enough. I got a fall weapon on me. Mr. Margolis, there's a demolition order in place. We could demolish that building as soon as the, as soon as the board puts money into the budget for that purpose. In the meantime, Mr. Margolis has been trying to find a way to rebuild the property and turn it back into what it originally was when his mom built it, building back in the late 60s. And that's his dream. Now, whether that dream will ever come to pass, considering how long it's been, since this has been going on, that's another issue.
So he's gonna prolong that, I would imagine.
Well.
Is there a right to do that, or?
Within reason, you know, he's been making every effort. And he's been in contact with us on a fairly regular basis. But about every year, about this time is about when we hear from someone that, that this property has, continues to deteriorate. It's pretty obvious that. Yeah, it does.
I guess I'm concerned about, um, you know, kids have been in there too. And if there was a fire or something, I, that's my concern.
Yeah, understandable. Unfortunately, we do have several houses around town that kind of fall into the same thing, and that's a matter of trying to find the 15,000 or 20,000 or 30,000 dollars to demolish them, and then we have nothing to show for it other than an expenditure in all of the revenue.
So it probably isn't gonna happen.
I don't know that we have a budget at the present time.
Kind of makes our property, property in the area there, he's got to, there's, there's, that's what you have to do.
Well, we have taken action in court. We had a valid court order, all those, taken all those necessary legal steps. It's just a matter of trying to do the actual work itself in either respect for the property owner, given him a fair amount of time in which he can try to do something, but we still have a difficult property there.
Okay. Thank you.
If you have any concerns, I'm sure you can call the police department. They'll rush out there, I'm sure.
Yeah, they were out once we did close. There were kids up there. Kids, teenagers.
And it's not your job to.
No, but we, yeah, that's not bad. Okay, I think you're.
The police don't mind here, if there is something, they don't mind your calls. You gotta tell them.
Your, she is calling again.
No, they don't.
They feel that way at all. They're very appreciative.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Now, we'll move on to unfinished business. I just have a few items. The Public Works has an open house. They're joining us to celebrate Public Works Week in our newly remodeled Public Works building, which we've waited dearly on that building to unpaste it. We didn't get as much as we wanted out of it because we waited, but it's still very nice. I mean, and they've done a great job out there. Some of the guys have all pitched in and just makes it a better place because, you know, it's theirs now. They own it, and it's a nice place. So open house will be this Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00. I know they have a big grill out there, and they enjoy cooking on it, so come join us Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00. Second item is Memorial Day Parade. Memorial Day Parade will be May 27, starting at 1:00 in Sharon at 11:00 a.m. It's gonna be one of our biggest parades to date, so come out and join. There will be some of us participating in it. I know I will be, I'm sure other trustees will be. So the third item I have to touch on, joined by Allen with our Police Department on June 1, 2024, to raise money for the Special Olympics. Check out our Facebook page and website for more information. So then I'll go out, trusty will bid. What do we got?
I have nothing.
Trustee Wes?
Oh, yes. The fire department's having a pancake breakfast on Sunday. Eat all you can. Great. So it'll, it's good. I know last year was really good, so enjoy yourself, and it's a big weekend for everything for a good celebration. That's it.
Trustee McCarthy?
Um, yeah, you guys touched on all the big stuff. I heard Superintendent Niergo said the weather's supposed to be better than originally expected, I think, for the parade. And as you mentioned, they're talking today. I think Virginia said it was like the biggest, um, she said in years that she's seen people are still signing up, um, something like that. So participants have huge numbers that are, are still looking for ways to stage it to get them in there. So it's gonna be, gonna be exciting. So, so come on out, and it's gonna be a good time. And then, um, there will be honoring, uh, um, during the Memorial ceremony of the park afterwards.
Trying to make that look really nice to it, so there's always. Trustee Brayden?
Hi. Can you confirm with me, please, I might have missed it, what time the fire department, fire system is from, would you?
process is from, did you?
Yeah, I think it's at eight o'clock.
Eight AM. I want everybody to have the opportunity to get in. Sounds like we're gonna have fun till weekend. I want to thank all the residents for coming out and joining us and bringing things up, and that's how we learn things, so we really do appreciate it. So, that's all I have.
trustee Whitmore.
Yeah, Percy Rogers just gearing up for the summer fair. We've got a lot of new events, activities, and we have lots planned over the summer, so just keep paying attention to our calendar. Our Facebook page will be pushing out with them.
Good.
Good, good.
I forgot, just wanted to thank Mayor Ploton Maravella for stepping in, did a very good job, and appreciate, it's been a long time since we, Mayor Ploton stepped in, so thank you for that.
It's good for him to do it on his birthday, too.
It's your birthday?
We don't, we don't want to let that pass.
Has to be Karen's birthday.
Happy birthday. Your birthday, I think, yeah. You turn right around, I know.
Did you hear the laugh?
You did, good job, though. Thank you for doing that.
The only other thing I got to bring up, and I know Tim hates, but branch to pick up is started, so, and I see a lot of branches out there.
Two more weeks.
Yeah.
So, actually, one more.
Go ahead. Yes, so, because we're off Monday, we're out, but just, if anybody has them, just get them out there, we just, we don't do it after that, sorry. I just need a motion to adjourn, someone?
Brayden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.